This is a regular meeting of the City Council of Ocean Shores. It is January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six P. M. The meeting was being held at the Ocean Shores Convention Center. Meetings are simulcast and archived on K O S W radio. Meetings are live streamed with closed captioning and may be accessed on the city website under Council Recordings. A meeting can be viewed on cable channel sixty-eight Thursdays at twelve P. M. and Sundays at ten A. M. Can we have do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sires.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Gribble.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Wills.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Lisa Scott from tonight.
All right, we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. All right, I'd like to get an approval for tonight's meeting agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, ceremonies and proclamations. We have a new code enforcement officer, Christine, and she will come up to take her oath of office. Oh, I need to do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. All right. I guess I'll lead it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll start this over. We have a new code enforcement officer, Christine McLean, and would like to introduce her if she would come up forward. Yeah, come on. And she's going to take the oath of office, and that will be done by Sarah Logan.
I, Christine McLean, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Washington, the laws of the State of Washington, and the ordinances of the City of Ocean Shores, and will faithfully perform the duties of code enforcement officer for the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, to the best of my abilities.
All right, welcome. All right, announcements. We have two vacancies on the Planning Commission. We have other appointments, and I would like to appoint Sarah Logan as Finance Director with Council consensus. All right, thank you very much. Scott is going to do swear her in for the Finance Director's position.
Aye, say your name.
Aye, Sarah Logan.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The Constitution of the State of Washington.
The laws of the State of Washington.
The laws of the State of Washington.
The ordinances of the City of Ocean Shores.
The ordinances of the City of Ocean Shores.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
You need Finance Director.
The duties of Finance Director.
City of Ocean Shores, Washington.
For the City of Ocean Shores, Washington.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
All right. All right, we're still on appointments. I would like to reappoint Steve Kern and also appoint Randy Johnston to the Planning Commission with Council consensus. All right, thank you. You guys, they'll get sworn in at a later date, right? So, welcome, both of you. Other reports now. We have a report by our Planning Commission Chair, Mark Lawler.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the Ocean Shores public. Planning Commission, we've been pretty busy. And so what I'd like to start with is, at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, actually, we had a subcommittee formed biking and walking in Ocean Shores. We held three public hearings, came up with twenty-two ideas, consolidated those to seventeen, and we did an online survey through the city website and the library, and came up with three hundred and nineteen responses, of which we took those and came up with a top five list, which we put into three categories. Near term, what we thought we could get done in two years or less, medium term, two to four years, and then long term, four years or more. So, the first one on the two years or less, we've already gotten started, which is the fifteen-mile outer loop. Not done yet, still needs some signage, but we did the ribbon cutting on that in on thirty October, two thousand and twenty-four. The other one on the two years or less is complete the connection of the Point Brown Avenue Northwest multi-use trail north to the traffic circle. On the medium term, two to four years, we have Marine View Drive multi-use trail and Mid Dune Trail. Long term, four years or more, we'd like to see walking and biking lanes on Ocean Shores Boulevard. So, as I mentioned before, the Planning Commission, in cooperation with Blue Zones and the City of Ocean Shores, commissioned the fifteen-mile loop on thirty October. Signage is still pending. Additionally, last year, we submitted ordinances to council on auxiliary dwelling units and adopted six hundred and fifty square feet as the minimum for homes in Ocean Shores. We're currently working on weed burners in cooperation with the Fire Department, metal fasteners in collaboration with the Planning and Building Department. We're looking at parking in the business corridor, and our strategic planning meeting from twenty twenty, for two thousand and twenty-five was held this afternoon. And I'll compile that, and anyone who would like a copy of that, I'll be glad to share. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, thanks, Mark. All right, next we have public comment. Public communication to council is intended for communication to the City Council regarding general council business or policy not on tonight's agenda. Address comments or questions to the City Council body, not an individual member or to city staff. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We request that the comments be nice and respectful. This is not a question and answer time, and the council cannot engage in conversation with the public. No person may use this public comment for purpose of campaign or advertising. The City Council will begin at the time once a citizen has started their public comment. At two minutes, you will see a green light, followed by a yellow light indicating thirty seconds remain of their public comment period. The red light will notify the reader that the public comment time has ended. Order of public comments will be individuals in person, individuals attending remotely. General public comment, whether in person or remotely, will continue in the usual position on the agenda. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We have six comments this evening. The first, Jen Hyatt, public hearing on the food bank.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tomorrow, there's a public hearing regarding the Moby Dick property at seven eight eight Point Brown Avenue Northeast regarding putting in a food bank there. I'm not sure of all what the plans are, but I've looked at the property, and there's lots of good land over there to put this in. The problem that I have, and the food bank is a blessing, not just to this community, but to Capelis and all over, they serve a lot of people, and it really is a blessing. So, this is not a criticism in any way. The problem I have with that address is the traffic going forth. And if you've been over on the other road when the food bank is open and giving out food, you all know how much traffic there is there. Now, there's lots of area that I'm assuming they'll clear for parking, but they still have to get in and out. And that area on that main road in and out, I've been on it several times, and many of you have, I'm sure, that gets backed up and with traffic going out of town. The crosswalks are a little problem, people going back and forth, walking, there's, you know, little hazards in there. So, if indeed this is put through, which I'm fairly comfortable it will be, I'm hoping that there will be thoughts as far as egress and ingress into the property. Even though they may be parking and lots of cars there, they still have to come and go. The other thing is on the building, if there could be some type of finish on it that would be rather ocean-y, if that's a good word, something that would represent the ocean out there that we have, whether it's whales or whatever, but something that would be inviting as a tourist drive back and forth and as they look at that property, hopefully that will be a consideration, and the traffic in and out. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have C. J. Griffith, Coastal Interpretive Center.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Coastal Interpretive Center to make a few quick comments. First, we want to extend a really big thank you to the council and the LTAC Committee for including the C I C. in its grant program in this last cycle. In two thousand and twenty-four, the C I C. saw a twenty percent increase in foot traffic and are predicting another forty percent increase this year, and these funds go to directly support the museum operations and getting people in the door. Second, just wanted to let folks know that the C I C. staff and volunteers are working with city staff to ensure that the reporting and maintenance standards for the weather wax preserve are being met so that more building credits can be released from the mitigation bank. Third, C I C. staff and volunteers are actually working with the U. S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and they are going to do some educational programs with North Beach School students in the run-up to April's Shorebird Festival. So, that should be pretty exciting. Keep an eye out for that. And then finally, just to let everyone know that our Executive Director, Jacob Baker, will be doing a presentation here in front of the council sometime in February, I believe, so hopefully folks will be in attendance to see that. Thank you.
Sandra Harley, Executive Director, Ocean Shores Food Bank.
I'm here today to thank you again for the council's generosity and give you a brief update. You've heard our mission, so no one in our community goes hungry, and our community is Ocean Shores. Our vision is everyone has access to sufficient nutritious food. During two thousand and twenty-four, one thousand two hundred and fourteen distinct households came to the food bank. That number compares to one thousand one hundred and thirty-two households in two thousand and twenty-three, nine hundred and nineteen households in two thousand and twenty-two, and six hundred and eighty-five households in two thousand and twenty-one. Notice a trend here? According to Food Lifeline, food insecurity affects about twenty-five percent of Washington Tonians. According to my estimates, based on what we're seeing, it's even higher here in Ocean Shores, closer to thirty percent. Also interesting is that four hundred and six households came to the food bank for the very first time last year. Coupled with the increasing number of households, we are receiving less food from the Hunger Relief Agency, and as a result, we are purchasing more food. Comparing Gray's Harbor County to the state, we have a shorter life expectancy of three years and a higher rate of diabetes and obesity. At the food bank, we recognized several years ago that nutrition was important and started offering fresh produce and purchasing only canned products that contain low or no sodium and sugar, making healthy choices easier for our guests. You should also know, our experience has been people come to the food bank only when they need us, not just because we give out free food. Last year, as has been true for many years, forty percent of our guests come only once or twice. The reasons our guests come to the food bank are varied. Could be a medical expense, car repair, raising grandchildren, or the higher cost of food and gas. It really doesn't matter. We ask no questions and welcome everyone with a smile. We couldn't do all this without the amazing support of this community, and we are proud to report that since we are an all-volunteer organization, ninety-eight percent of all donations go toward providing food. We don't know what the future holds, but I expect the need in our community will continue to grow, and our food expenditures will continue to increase as well. Again, your financial support during two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four made a significant difference. On behalf of our guests, thank you.
Jenny Kate, High Dunes Trail.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Kate. I'm a resident here in Ocean Shores. I'm here just to take a minute of your time to ask for your consideration for one minor improvement on the High Dunes Trail. I actually love that trail, and I certainly appreciate the fact that there are benches to sit on and enjoy the scenery as well as rest. Every single one of the benches, except for one, faces the ocean. And the one that doesn't face the ocean and faces back towards the city and looks into hotels is, I don't know, weird, I think. It's the one place where, on a clear day such as today, you can actually see the ocean. It's probably the only bench where you can actually see the ocean, and yet it's facing backwards. And so I'm just wondering, I have no idea how much money that would cost to turn it around, maybe when you're doing the improvements to the north end, you could look into that. But I would really love it if all the benches faced the ocean. Thank you.
Daniel Dyer, no comment, no topic listed. That makes more sense. Okay, thank you much. Jeff Grill, sewer fee raised.
Good evening, council and mayor. On last week, a number of you voted to raise our sewer fees, and I, as you know, as the woman that spoke from the food bank, cost of food has gone up. In two thousand and twenty, hamburger at Walmart was two dollars forty-five cents. This afternoon, it was over five dollars and forty cents. In two thousand and twenty, for diesel fuel, I paid two dollars and ten cents. Today, that is over four dollars and sixty cents. The cost of everything is going up, and those of us on fixed incomes here, you know, when when the cost of the sewers go up, it hurts. So, the other thing I want to point out is, there's a gentleman by the name of Warren Buffett, and every few years, he will go on national TV and complain that his secretary actually pays a higher tax rate than he does. So, I prowled through the federal code, and I didn't find anything that prohibits him from adding a few zeros to what his tax burden is. Just to make sure, I called Olympia, the IRS office, and spoke to Fred, and he said there's no penalty if Warren added a few billion dollars to it. So, I would ask that the people that voted to raise the tax rate, next time you send in your water bill, maybe add a few dollars or put a zero behind that. Thank you.
Mike Fosnick, introduction of the new G. M. of the Ocean Shores Golf Course.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens of Ocean Shores. My name is Michael Fosnick. I'm with Premier Golf, a division of Troon. We've been managing the golf course here in town since May of twenty-three. Last year, we had some G. Ms. that had some injuries, and we had been out of, without a G. M. since early October of last year. So, I'm proud to announce that we have a new G. M. here. His name is Michael Kitani. Michael's a six, seven-year PGA member and is going to create the leadership that we need for that golf course to be successful. So, Michael, if you want to say a few words just about yourself, he literally just drove in from Sacramento, so.
Good evening. My goal here is to give you guys as councilmen and residents a golf course that you want to play and that you're proud of to be at. And for people that don't live in the area, to actually come around, come into the area to golf. If they come into the area to golf, that means better business for all the other shops. They'll eat here, they'll stay here, and that'll bring more revenue in. My experience personally is, I've been in the golf business since two thousand and sixteen. I've been a head pro since two thousand and nineteen. I've started at a resort course. Most recently, I've spent three, almost four years at a very busy public course in the Livermore, California area, down in the East Bay of San Francisco. So, I'm very familiar with public golf courses and what the needs are of the customers and how to give them what they want. I plan on working with everybody here, and that's all for now. Time to get to work.
Thank you much, and that concludes public comment.
All right, next up, we have City Administrator's Report.
All right, good evening again, Mayor and council. I'm going to do something I don't normally do really quickly. Actually, there's going to be two things that are different about this report than normal. One is, I'm going to answer a citizen comment that came in public comment because I've heard it a hundred times, and there's a reason for it, but I just want everyone to know the reason for it. And then the second one is, part of this presentation is going to be interactive. The last issue I'm going to talk about is Damon Pointe, why it's closed, what we're doing down there, and I think it will really benefit everyone to see some of the videos and some of the pictures that we've taken to get a much clearer assessment of what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. So, the first one I'll address is the question that was my first question when I walked the High Dunes Trail is, why is the bench not facing the ocean? And I think I'm not the only person to have observed that. Many people have come to me, including council members and others, to ask that question. And the reason is, is for ADA compliance, when we built that trail, so that grant money came with strings attached, that everything had to be ADA compliant, and when they built it, we would have to do a wider build-out to get a wheelchair around it, and it has to have a certain number of feet, and I can't remember if it's four or six feet, of accessibility in order to do that. I would not mind at all turning that bench around. It will simply have to be another project if we do it, and we would simply have to make some kind of extension that wasn't in the original budget to do it. That is the reason that it is the way it is. I agree, it would be much nicer looking at the ocean, but for ADA compliance reasons and for the strings that were tied to the grant that had to be ADA compliant, we had to design it that way. So, it doesn't mean we can't change it, but that's the reason it is what it is. So, having addressed that, I will go back to my regular scheduled comments or my original update. The North Beach Jetty. I did want to forward counsel and the audience an update on the North Beach Jetty. I got to speak with the Seattle District of the U. S. Army Corps of Engineers today, and according to the Army Corps of Engineers, the environmental documentation is almost complete. The new presidential administration has made some modifications from the former one, so some additional time will be required to make these adjustments, but the Corps does not think they're in any way too difficult to manage. The core of, the hope is for the Army Corps of Engineers to go out to contract in August, and that bids will be awarded for the project in September and/or October. After that, work will begin first with staging materials and the placement of equipment and building access routes, and that will take place in late two thousand and twenty-five, late this year, November, December, and early two thousand and twenty-six. The actual placement of boulders and the construction of the jetty is likely to begin in April or May of two thousand and twenty-six, and the estimated completion date, based on that timeline from the Army Corps of Engineers, is October, two thousand and twenty-seven. So, roughly a year and six months of building, with the trucks will be going back and forth on our roads, and because Marine View Drive, I'm sorry, not Marine View Drive, Ocean Shores Boulevard, will be the largest recipient of large rocks going down it, at that point, we will then go back to the Corps and get monies that will hopefully be allocated to us, and they should be, to fix those roads from the Corps, because obviously it's going to do a lot of damage with, you know, almost a full sixteen to eighteen months of large boulders going up and down that road. Other things. Mariner Court, the City of Ocean Shores is aiming to bring an emergency proclamation to the next City Council meeting. Mariner Court is suffering the same erosion areas, or the same erosion issues as Marine View Drive is currently. The aim is to protect the city infrastructure that exists there and the loss of land from increasing erosion. The location of this is located at Area Nine on the Joint Ocean Shores Westport Community Technical Partners Grant that is being facilitated by Ocean Shores, Westport, and Gray's Harbor County to combat erosion issues. And I'll just lighten the audience a little more about what that Community Technical Partners Grant does. The City of Ocean Shores and the City of Westport have come together, and we've created sort of a panel of different experts in the field and different people, grant writers, myself, Marshall Reed, to identify high-risk areas of erosion, to put that into a joint Community Technical Partners Program, to then give that to the county, and the county will act as sort of a lobbying body for the whole of both the Twin Harbor cities to try to get state and federal funding. Some of that federal funding that we are looking at is FEMA-dependent, so put it all in a box, and we'll see what happens when we get there. But that is, that is the plan, and we just think we are stronger together. Westport has identified issues that they have that are priorities for erosion. We have those issues as well, and by both cities collaborating together, I think we have more leeway with the legislature. So, that's what we're looking at. Speaking of other things, Town Hall Meeting. The City of Ocean Shores will be hosting a Town Hall Meeting on Thursday, February sixth, in this building at six o'clock. The meeting will be about freshwaterways management and the freshwaterways management plan. Our consultants from Herrera will be here. If you can't make it in person, you can zoom in, and that link will be available on the city website. The Ocean Shores Police Station, the city wishes to congratulate them, and I think a lot of our community members do as well. At around eight forty-five on January twenty-six, the police department received a call regarding trespassing in the seven hundred block of Park Avenue Northeast. Upon arrival, the officers on the scene determined it to be a burglary in progress. Two male suspects were contacted while exiting a detached garage. One male quickly surrendered and was taken into custody. The second male hoped to make it out on his skateboard, which he had left in the driveway and attempted to escape, but that was unsuccessful. Both subjects were booked into the Gray's Harbor County Jail for burglary in the second degree, with additional charges being referred to the county prosecutors. And we want to send a big shout-out and a thank you to the observant citizens of Ocean Shores, who observed the suspicious activity and called it in, and the city, and myself in particular, wants to thank the Ocean Shores Police Department, Sergeant Church, and Officer Roller, and that's from the mayor and myself. Thank you for your very quick response and professional dealing with that matter. The Dog Kennel. I mentioned this on a K O S W interview last week, that the city was trying to get out of the dog business. We were not done with this, so I probably said it a little too early, but let me just give you the background. Based on the number of hours that local volunteers have been dedicating to the kennel, and basically honest to the fact that those volunteers are really doing everything they can for those dogs at the kennel, O. S. P. D. and the administration have been in touch with several nonprofit organizations that we wanted to look at to see if they would be willing to run the kennel. Right now, this is in the development stages. We're still running it by our insurance companies and our attorney, but the hope is, in the very near future, a nonprofit organization, a five-oh-one-C-three, will afford a long-term solution for the operation of the dog kennel, which will allow officers simply to drop off the dogs, and the five-oh-one-C-three that runs that kennel will then be responsible for everything that comes after that process, including up to the release. So, I will have more on that as it comes to fruition, but that's where we are. And then lastly, and this is going to be an interactive presentation, I really think that everyone needs I really think that everyone needs to see this, and I wish people on the radio could, but you'll be able to watch it later. Damon Point, lots of questions being asked. When is it, how long is it gonna be closed? What's going on in Marineview Drive? So I just thought I'd kind of walk us through some really key things. Marshall, if you want to come up here, we can answer some council questions, because no doubt you're going to have them from constituents. But I really want to show what it is we're facing, why we're doing what we're doing, and what a danger that area is actually becoming, and not just because of construction, but for other reasons, and I'll show you why. So IF, or I don't know who's running that, Sarah, can you show, please, once again for everyone in the audience, the time-lapse erosion video of Ocean Shores for those who have not seen it? And Marshall, if you want to comment on this, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. So the video you're looking at here is a time lapse that I believe starts in 1974, showing Damon Point as, you know, for the most part, undeveloped. And then you can see it develop out at the tip. At the same time, the tip is developing, you can see the Oihut Bay area of Damon Point, behind the relic jetty, start to erode. And so there's a, there's a whole process of sediment migration that's going on in, around, and over the top of the old relic jetty that's in there. And we suspect that there's, you know, a major impact of the erosion caused by the degradation of the old relic jetty. That's an old Army Corps of Engineer structure that hasn't been maintained, as I understand it, since its installation. It was installed to facilitate the construction of the jetty that is being maintained today. And so the work that we're doing down on Marineview Drive is to just hold our own right now and stop the retreat of the shoreline before it gets into the public infrastructure. There is some inherent benefit to the property owners between us, but it's better for everybody if we maintain more buffer as opposed to letting the waves wash the houses out and then put some sort of a wall in there. It makes sense now to stop the retreat there, give us a little breathing room. In the event that we do get a 2016, or a 2006, or a 1999, 2000 storm, we're gonna need that buffer, all of it. So, anyway, that's the, that's the process that's been going on out there. We're actively building berm now. The guys are getting 600 ton a day out there. And that's, that's kind of our, our short-term answer. At the same time that we're building this, we've got our engineering team looking at a more medium-term measure, which has yet to be determined. My, my thought is, and the reason that we're building the berm out of the materials that we are in the location that we're at, is because that we expect the, the medium-term measure to take care of that shoreline is gonna be compatible with what we're putting out there today. We don't want to do the job twice. You guys have heard me say that before. What we're installing now is a smaller version of what they did down at Washaway Beach at Tocqueville and, and the north end of Willapa Harbor. So we're hoping that we have the same success in the next year, probably the next budget cycle. I expect that, once we've got a full design of the medium-term measure, we'll be back out there, probably increasing the size. We're gonna watch the performance of this, of this measure through this winter. And, and if it keeps going the way it is, there's gonna be no damage, so that probably is not a great measure. But I'm guessing the storm season's not over. We'll get something to look at there. Scott, go ahead.
Can we, can we put up this slide next, the one that council has on their desk? And I'll just let you talk about the work, how long it's taking, what you're looking at there, Marshall.
Okay, so this is, this is a map of the shoreline along Marineview Drive. It's broke down into seven different areas for the purpose of budgeting and grant application. Areas 1 through 3 and areas 4, and most of area 5 have all been constructed. Area 1 through 3 are done at an elevation of 18 feet. Areas 4 and 5 are, have their driving surface complete at about 13 and 1/2 or 14 feet elevation. And then Area 7 is what they're constructing right now. And that will be built to elevation 15 feet with the designed toe that the rest of the area will get at a later time. Our, our process of installing the berm is to try to get the whole thing connected and some form of protection to stop the retreat. For those of you that can see, the yellow area is area number 6. And those, those properties adjacent to the access to Damon Point have, you know, suffered somewhere between 20 and 30 feet of erosion in this winter cycle. So we felt like, in order to stop the retreat, it would be best to get the driving surface down through there and then put the 5:1 slope toe on the waterward side of that driving surface. Currently, Area 7, down by the Marina, is probably about 75% complete as of the end of today. Area 6 is where we will go next. We're stockpiling cobble, where all the vehicles are parked in the Damon Point parking area. That area is closed to vehicle and pedestrian traffic, because we've got dump trucks entering and leaving the parking lot, dumping rock. We've got a loader running back and forth out that road, and we've got an excavator swinging around that area. So it's closed to pedestrian. It would be a violation of OSHA rules to have pedestrians moving about an active construction site. So we had to close it down just for the, for the benefit of safety. Next week, we're expecting that we will be working on Area 6. I'm thinking we have three or four days of hauling out there to get Area 6 tied into Area 5. Once we get that tied in, we'll be moving back to the other end at the Neptune Drive, which is the access point for areas 1 through 3. And then we will start building up areas 4 and 5 to the design elevation of 15 feet minimum. And then we'll put a 5:1 slope out on the waterward side of that. And, and the entire structure is designed to dissipate wave energy. It's not necessarily there to prevent overtopping. It's just to slow the retreat and minimize the amount of energy that hits the shoreline on the backside. So that's kind of a summary of what we've got going out there.
Would you mind, the next slide, could we put up the one that's just of Marineview Drive and just to show how the normal high tides look now even without, no, not that one yet, the other one, that one. So you can see right now, just from that, that video right there, we used to have, at a high tide, and that's not at a king tide. That's just a normal picture on a normal day. We used to have like between 30 and 50 more feet of sand, even when I started here, a few, almost six years ago now. So you can see, just at a regular high tide without storm, how close that water is getting to the shoreline of Ocean Shores and how close it is to their homes. And Marshall, I don't know if you want to add anything on that or not.
Yeah, no, I think I'll, I'll let one of the next videos kind of speak for itself when it comes to the, to the safety of that area.
Okay, perfect. So now we can go to the Damon Point one. All right, and so people are asking myself and Marshall and the city and the mayor, you know, how long is this going to remain closed? And there are two issues. One is the construction and the build-out. And the second is this reality right here. That is Damon Point taken only about two weeks ago. And as you can see, that is not the structure that existed here five, six years ago. That is an island that is surrounded by water. We have had three emergency responses and rescues out there already. And on all three, they've had to sit there and wait. One was an actual true panic situation where they had called and the Coast Guard just told them, "You're gonna have to hold on out there until that water recedes, because we are not gonna be in a position to get you." And our firefighters took that call. And they're saying, you know, "We really don't recommend you get off that island and swim, because you may get sucked out A to C, and B, the water's about 52 degrees and hypothermia was sinking really fast." So we did have some individuals that were stranded out there as a result of tide change. Until we can find a way to address that issue and until everyone's really, we have good signage that warns people about tides, we're gonna have to think about this. It may have to remain closed after construction, because I am very afraid that this will happen. And why don't we show a video of what just happened in Oregon that was remarkably similar? So this is a very, very similar setup. She's walking along there. It's totally safe one minute, and then the next minute, you're on your way out to sea. And so, you know, it's just a question of, you know, real life and public safety issues. We do not want people getting, going out on Damon Point, not being aware of what the tides are, and getting stranded out there, because at some point, we will lose someone. I've been in contact with DNR, the Department of Natural Resources. I've told them that we are closing Damon Point, the access approach. They have not gotten back to me with any comment. We have been in almost constant contact with the Quinalt Enterprises and the Quinalt Nation, because they own the camping ground that, down there. At some point, we may look at an alternative way, because the tribe in the Quinalt and Tony Ensler and the Quinalt Nation had afforded us a viable sort of pathway around to get down to Damon Point. That area is now completely eroded. It's gone. They've lost six camp lots that are down there, and, and it is receding, as you can see, on their end as well. We're all in the same conundrum. We all have the same problem. But fortunately, we have a plan to at least address the issue of erosion all the way up to that point. But it, it won't stop us. It won't help us re-accrete land. We know the only way to re-accrete that land probably is a reconstruction of the remnant jetty. We have a Community Technical Partners Grant that we're working on that might allow us or afford us a venue or an avenue to do that. Marshall, I don't know if you want to discuss that for a minute?
Yeah, so we, we have engaged with Moffett Nickel, who's a coastal engineering firm that has two of the engineers working for him that I started out with on the beginning of the Marineview Drive project. And, and they're gonna take a hard look at what's going on with the currents and sediment transport of the area around the relic jetty. If, if you look at what's been going on in the last five years, there's an accelerated rate of sediment transport that is not landing that sediment anywhere near Damon Point or the shorelines along Marineview Drive or even up into Oihut Bay. The steep, the sediment just keeps migrating out of there. And as the, as the relic jetty continues to degrade, in the picture that they just had up there, that channel is, is identical to what happened to the tip of the jetty, or to the tip of Damon Point last year and the year before. It started out with a small breach like this. I can tell you that it's pretty shallow all the way out. And in the middle of that channel, between the RV park and, and what is now affectionately known as Protection Island, there's about a four-foot deeper than normal channel, so that you might be able to walk out there with your knee boots on and get all the way up to that channel. But if you fall in it, it's either gonna suck you into North Bay, or it's gonna suck you out into the outer harbor. So that's one of the, one of the issues that we're having with, you know, pedestrians getting out there. I'm, I'm out there on a pretty regular basis, and I, I left one lady that didn't want to come back, you know, just before dusk, and she said, "I'm gonna wait for the tide." And that's, you know, that's just a dangerous situation to have. So we're looking at this, this sediment transport issue as it relates to the submerged jetty. I contend that if the jetty were maintained, then the sediment that we're losing from Marineview Drive and up in Oihut Bay would not be migrating out into the North Bay area and eventually down the Oihut Channel or across the face of Damon Point into the, the main harbor shipping channel. And if we can convince and prove that that sediment from our shorelines is ending up in the shipping channel, then we have a good chance at getting the Corps of Engineers to come in and re-establish some sort of a design height to the, to the relic jetty, which I consider the long-term measure or the permanent measure to resolve some of the issues of the erosion along Oihut Bay and Marineview Drive. I don't know what that's gonna do to Damon Point. I have some anecdotal evidence that says, you know, Damon Point was originally a bridge between Ocean Shores and Protection Island, and then they pushed some sand out there, and then they hauled some rock out there, and, you know, they sunk a ship out there, the Catala, and, and sediment accreted when we still had sediment coming up the Washington coast from the Columbia River. And, and that built the land bridge there. I can tell you that Washington State Parks, over the last 20 years, before the road washed out completely, tried every erosion control measure known to man to try to preserve that road and keep vehicle access to the end of Damon Point, and they failed at that. Matter of fact, I live over on the Burrows Road, and pieces of their shoreline stabilization to try to preserve that road are north of my property up in North Bay. So the currents out there are pretty significant, but we are gonna make the effort to, to put together a plan. We've got, like Scott was saying, we have the grant that will give us the ability to analyze all of the sediment transport and the currents and stuff that are carrying our shorelines around the inner and outer harbor at this point. So that'll be, we've just put our, our engineers on contract, and we'll be starting that fairly soon.
All right, well, thank you very much, Marshall. And again, to the public, I just want to say, we know it's a popular place. We know it's a place that locals and visitors alike want to go to. Right now, we have heavy machinery that's moving around there. We're moving rocks everywhere. Those, some of those machines, some of those, those loads go really quick. So for that reason, we want to keep people out of there. But the other reason we want to keep people out of there is, if people start going out on Damon Point right now, the way it's at, we're gonna lose someone out at sea, and we're trying to avoid that as well. So that's, that's really what we're doing. We understand, we hear it. I know there's questions. When is it gonna open? We love to go there. Understand all of that, but right now, it is just simply not a safe place to be. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Council liaison reports, committee reports. We'll start with Richard.
Thank you. So I signed warrants last Friday. I attended the radio board meeting today, and there's a couple of significant things out of the radio board meeting. First, and probably most interesting, is the TV station, North Beach TV, is going to be live-streaming both the boys and girls' basketball games on North Beach TV, and I believe on the, on the YouTube channel, and perhaps even on Channel 68. If you want to see the schedule, go to koswradio.com, and that schedule is published there. The other thing that I think is pretty significant is, we had a power outage. We've had a couple of power outages, but there was a power outage recently where the city's generator kicked in, but the circuit breaker had tripped, so the radio station had no power and was not able to do any emergency broadcasting. Fortunately, our electrician mayor was called in, and he knew exactly what to do and where the circuit breaker that was tripped was at. And we got the power back to the radio station and was able to continue emergency broadcasting. So the point is, is the radio board is starting to work on a, a series of procedures, what to do when the power is out. And generally, the city's generator kicks in, and it's not a big issue. But if the city generator does not kick in, well, we lose everything that's on the Public Works Yard radio tower. And I think that that includes the police and fire tactical radios, as, as well as our low-power backup system. So thank you, radio board, for recognizing the problem and starting to work on addressing the problem. The last thing I'd say is, the mayor and I meet once a month. We talked on the telephone yesterday. And I've gotta say, our, our, our meetings, whether telephonically or face-to-face, have been very productive and informative. Thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Rich?
I wasn't able to attend, but I did watch the first council of governments, council of governments meeting that I had. Just updates from the different cities and the different organizations that are members. DOT, a while back, State Route 109 had a, had received a grant for a scenic highway plan, and now they're, they're doing the same for State Route 105. Aberdeen received a $240,000 grant to look into establishing a quiet zone for the train traffic that's expected to triple in the next few years. Kazi is finishing their municipal building next month. It just experienced a main waterline break, where they had a call-in to Aberdeen for assistance to repair the water main. Westport just hired a new city administrator and a new building official. They're moving forward with their plan for building a 2,000-person tsunami tower that will double as a viewing tower, and on the ground level, they're designing some type of an event space in their plan. And Grays Harbor Transit added nine new buses to their fleet. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Allison?
I signed warrants.
Okay. Lisa Gribble?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to my new liaison assignments this year, and I also attended agenda setting.
All right, thanks. Tom?
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Denise?
I also signed warrants, filling in for Allison. And Allison, we just attended council guidelines, which we hope to be bringing forward to the, the council very soon. The finance committee was canceled. I did attend Public Works, which gave a recap of the 2024 projects, but also talked about the upcoming grants, particularly the, the CTP one that, that Scott and Marshall just talked about. And I do have to say, looking at the grants that the city is involved in, one of the things that really hit me was how complex they are in terms of the various agencies that they either need to cooperate with or in terms of the various agencies that they either need to cooperate with or coordinate with. And we did talk at Public Works about the upcoming town hall meeting. So please come to that on February 6th.
Right, thanks, Denise. Mayor's report. The city is working on partnering with North Beach School District to improve our baseball field at the North Bay Park. And this will include fencing and infield improvements. So when we get that finalized, I'll bring that information forward on that. A public hearing will be tomorrow for the location of the food bank. And that is going to be held at 10:00 a.m. at the Convention Center. And I wanted to remind everybody, the mayor's office is open for citizens to talk with me Wednesday and Friday afternoons. You can contact Sarah. She will schedule you an appointment on that. I'm also open to meet with the council to update council members on what the city is working on. So please reach out so we can meet. And now, can we get a motion for our consent agenda? Can we recess?
Yeah, technical, technical issue.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess, I guess. All right, we will reconvene the meeting. And I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have a public hearing. We will recess the regular city council meeting at 7:03, I guess it is. And we will convene into a public hearing comment, a public hearing. This is a public hearing open before, let me start that over. This is a public hearing before the Ocean Shore City Council to receive public comment for or against the Oihut Bay Division Four final plat. This will be presented by our city lead planner, Marshall Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm bringing before the council and the citizens tonight, Division Four of the Oihut Bay project. Pat and his crew have been really busy this winter, getting things all whipped into shape. And so I'm going to start out with the staff report. Public Works and the Planning Department received final plat application for the Oihut Bay Development, Division Four, under Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1628 final plat. And this report serves as notice to the Planning Commission and to the Planning Department that, number one, the planner has reviewed the final plat declarations, accepted them, and is providing this favorable report. The file date is December 6, 2024, under file number Oihut Bay, Phase Four. We scheduled a public hearing before the Planning Commission for January 27, 2025, and received a favorable vote and a recommendation from the Planning Commission. And that rolls into the January 28 public hearing, which is held before the council tonight. The Planning Commission's next step, defined in Ocean Shores Municipal Code 1628040, would be submit this final plat to the council for final approval. We've gone through the entire project. I have confirmation from the Water Department, Sewer Department leads, that all of the water and sewer utilities have been installed as per design. And the number of lots proposed in Division Four matched the number of lots originally platted in the preliminary plat for this area. I can't remember how many of you council members were here. But basically, the preliminary plat was brought before this body for approval, for them to start construction. And once the construction's done and it's been inspected and approved by all of the field crews, then it comes back before this body for a final approval. It's called final plat. Lots appear to be consistent with the development agreement between the City of Ocean Shores and the Ocean Shores Villages LLC, which is now referred to as Oihut Bay, and the development agreement as recorded in March 20 of 2014. Oihut Bay Land Company has provided a bill of sale wherein the City of Ocean Shores will purchase the waterworks utilities for the sum of $1. That's what we did in Phase Three. In my report to Scott, there was some discrepancy as to whether a utility transfer could be transferred for a sum of $1 or if it needed to be $100. I confirmed that with the city's attorney. And it is appropriate to transfer the utility ownership with a $1 payment. So that will be pending approval. Parking is consistent with the restrictions identified in the development agreement, Table 4C. Each of the different types of building units will have their required parking. The subgrade stormwater system has been inspected and approved as installed. There are some surface appurtenances that have not been installed and will be part of the paving. So the thing that's different about this final plat approval is because the asphalt batch plant shut down before we could get the roads paved, the roads are not going to be paved until this spring, as soon as the batch plant opens back up again. In lieu, Mr. Brunstad has posted a $100,000 bond to guarantee that the roads will be paved for specifications. In addition, he has also posted a utility bond, a guarantee, which serves as a warranty for a one-year period after the recording of the plat and substantial completion of the utilities, which is done at this point. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for public comment if we have any public comment regarding the plat, the final plat.
Right, thanks, Marshall. Do we have any public comment out there? Yes. Go ahead.
I'm a resident of Ocean Shores. And I don't, I hear about all the building and everything, but I don't hear about the animal, safety of the animal of Ocean Shores. Everybody comes for the deer and things like that. But I don't hear anything that's been said about the animals. I'd like to hear how they're being treated, how much property's been put aside for them. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Do you want to go ahead, Marshall?
Yeah, I'd be happy to expand on that. So when Oihut Bay was originally developed, there was a wetland survey done by a team of biologists that went in and identified all the critical areas that are a part of the Oihut Bay subdevelopment. And as a part of each one of these phases, as these wetlands that they're building around are encountered, they were identified in the original plat. And those have been preserved in their natural state. And as we go in there, they silt fence off all of the areas that are critical to wetland habitat and their buffers. And then it's protected through the construction. And the animals can pass in and out of there. They have areas, the deer have areas to hide. I don't know, have you got any bear out there? So the bear can go through there. They have little islands of natural area that they can get in. And then as a part of the final landscape, they'll install a three-rail fence around these wetland areas that are buffer habitat. And then the animals will have that area to roam around, get in and out. So that kind of is how we're handling accommodating some of the wildlife in the area out there. Also, Oihut Bay is adjacent to the Washington State Game Preserve down at the south end of Ocean Shores, which is a multi-acre area of wildlife habitat that includes estuarian wetlands and buffer. And there's all kinds, any kind of wildlife that's in Ocean Shores, you'll find it down there in that area adjacent to the Oihut Bay development.
All right, thank you, Marshall. Anybody else have any other comments? All right, how about the council?
All right, well, I guess we will close this public hearing and reconvene to the regular city council meeting at 7:10.
Thank you, council.
All right, we have another public hearing. We will recess the public, recess the regular city council meeting at 7:10. And convene into the public hearing. And this public hearing is before the City of Ocean Shores Council to receive public comment for or against the sale of surplus equipment. This will be presented by our city administrator, Scott Anderson.
All right, good evening again. This is something that we do every time we do surplus equipment. And it's set up by RCW 3594040 that states, whenever a city shall determine by resolution of its legislative authority that any land, property, or equipment originally acquired for public utility purposes is surplus to the city's needs and is no longer required for providing continued public utility service, then such legislative authority by resolution and after a public hearing may cause such lands, property, or equipment to be leased, sold, or conveyed. So by legal definition, we have to do this public hearing. And also per the RCW, we have already put this out in the Daily World. So I guess we can go to public comment, if there's any public comment on this.
All right, thanks. Do we have any public comment on this item? We do not. Any questions or from the council? All right. We will close this public hearing and reconvene our regular city council meeting at 7:12. We have no old business. And so we have a resolution in new business of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, declaring certain miscellaneous equipment and unserviceable, inadequate, obsolete, worn out, or unfit, and no longer necessary, and authorizing disposal of the surplus equipment and materials. And that will be presented by Scott Anderson, our city administrator.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council, and citizens at home that are looking at your packets. Item 11 is actually not necessary because it's superfluous. It flows directly into item 12, and they follow the same parameters. And so this is a resolution declaring certain miscellaneous equipment unserviceable, inadequate, obsolete, worn out, or unfit, and no longer necessary. And it would authorize the disposal of surplus equipment. The most important part of that is, of course, the packet. You can see the equipment and what it is. And that begins on item 21. And you'll see there are vehicles involved. There's machinery, there are storage containers. And what else is there anything to note here? Primarily vehicles that we are disposing of. And I don't know if there's, do we have a public comment on this as well?
Yes. Do we have any public comment? Didn't think we would. All right, how about council questions or discussion?
Yes, Sarah, please.
So just as a public notice, all of this equipment, anything that we are surplusing will go on a website called publicsurplus.com. And so before this is all available, it'll be listed on the city's website along with the Facebook page with access to that. The time limits, and then the images will be on that website as well.
That's very valuable information. Thank you.
All right, we don't have any questions or comments from the council? Do we have any council action? Yes, Allison?
So I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, declaring certain miscellaneous equipment as unserviceable, inadequate, obsolete, worn out, or unfit, and no longer necessary, and authorizing disposal of the surplus equipment and materials.
Second? All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we got a request of the City Council of the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, approving the Oihut Bay Division Four final plat. And that's presented again by our lead planner, Marshall Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm bringing before the council a request to approve final plat for Division Four of the Oihut Bay Development. And we're going to take it back to the mayor for public comment if there are any public comments regarding this.
Do we have any public comment? It seems we do not. So council, any questions or comments? Yes, Richard? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'd just like to thank Pat and his team for all the work that they've done down at the south end of Ocean Shores and just what great work they've done with Oihut. It has really brought a lot to our city. I moved here over 12 years ago, and we used to bike through there when it was just an abandoned stretch of land with that lonely condo building. And what a difference. And it's really created a great economic boom in our town and just a wonderful place to visit or stay. So thank you for all that you've done.
Thanks. Richard?
I'd like to make a motion to, that the city requests the City of Ocean Shores, Washington, to approve the Oihut Bay Division Four final plat.
Second?
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Marshall. So next up, we've got a discussion for a hotel ordinance. And that's going to be led by Richard Wills.
So you've all had an opportunity to read the draft. I kind of created a handbook with Shannon Rubin's help. I want to say, I want to really congratulate and commend Shannon Rubin. She did the lion's share, the meat and potatoes of the proposed Ocean Shores ordinance. Along with that, and I kind of added the gravy and potatoes. But she did the brunt of the work. And I want to recognize her for that. But it's sad that we need this type of an ordinance. There's three additional, there's references, links to three additional ordinances that we can all look at. I hope you have. So for me, the discussion is, do we, the council, think that we, the city, need this ordinance? And I'm very interested in what the public has to say. And if the council decides we need this ordinance, then I think the council needs to discuss an ad hoc committee to finalize, compile. So I'm open for public comments.
All right, thank you, Richard. Do we have any public comment on this? We've got one online. Yes, we have one online public comment from Shannon Rubin. Shannon, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Um, not as well as we'd like. Give it one second.
Okay, is this any better?
No, no, better, better. We got it. Go ahead.
So obviously, this impacts the Canterbury as well. And no one really wants to ask the government to come in and supervise us and to make us perform. We should be doing that anyways. And it opens us up to risk also. Because, you know, as good as our establishment, maybe we're not perfect. And so this does open us up to risk. And we could be potentially not doing something correct that we're not aware of. But I feel as professionals, when I'm looking at reviews of the other hotels, and I just looked at a different establishment, and the first seven are one-star reviews within the last two weeks. And there's one three-star reviews. If a traveler Googles Ocean Shores and they hit hotels that have reviews like that, they're probably not coming to Ocean Shores. And we at the Canterbury have seen a significant decrease in rates and occupancy because I feel like some of the hotels are declining our area. And that is why I asked that we look into this. Because I feel like it needs to be a tool so that people take our accommodations seriously. And hoteliers take their business seriously. And I don't think that you're going to have to spend a lot of labor going into hotels to do this. Maybe one or two. But I think once word gets out that Ocean Shores is serious about tourism accommodations, people will perform because no one wants government overreach in their establishment. But the problem is, is the Health Department's not doing it, and no one else is. And so, you know, if you can't get the Health Department to do it, then it becomes a city issue. And it's going to impact LTAC, and that's my concern. And I really want to stress that when you're reading reviews, they're there. The general public can Google any hotel in Ocean Shores and read the reviews. You sort by newest, and it's right there in black and white. It's not Shannon being dramatic or anything like that. Like, I am, the first time in my career at the Canterbury, selling rooms in the wintertime for $40 or $50. You have hotels in town that have sold for $5 million recently, and they're selling rooms for $60. You cannot be making a profit when you're selling rooms for $60. And then... and then getting horrible reviews on top of it. It's gonna impact our area.
All right, thank you. Or you got more?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any comments from the council?
Yes, Richard.
I would like to just emphasize tourism and the income that tourism brings is a major concern to me, both as a resident and as a council member. And when people are thinking about booking the convention center for a convention, and they go and look at the reviews that the hotels are getting, why would they come here for a one-star review when they could go there for a five-star review? So that's why I think that this is so critical. I would also like to add that in the draft that Shannon prepared and I polished a little bit, that what I like about our draft is that we focused on the wax that cover the hotel cleanliness and all those aspects. And then I transitioned that or drafted that as a handbook with the intent, the RCW, the city ordinance that I see, would be, we adopt those wax by reference. But the handbook is an easy guide for the hotel to say, these are what I need to agree with, these are what I need to keep up with. So I welcome comments from the other city council members, and whether or not you think that we should create this ordinance.
Yeah, Denise? Did you wanna say something? Oh, I'm sorry, Allison.
I've read a lot of those reviews that Shannon was talking about. And I've seen pictures and some pretty unsanitary things I've seen and read about. And I think this is a great idea. A couple of questions I have is, how is it gonna be enforced? And who's gonna do the inspections? And what the cost could be to the city to do this?
So if I may, Frank?
Yes.
And I hope I'm not getting out of my wheelhouse. I had an impromptu opportunity to talk to Roy Simmons, and he was very much in favor of this, and says he has the time. And it's my, and this, I'm out of my wheelhouse. This is Frank and Scott's wheelhouse. But I think that our Building Inspector Roy can take this on. And I, like Shannon said, I don't think he will take but one or two hits before everybody stands up and says, let's pay attention.
All right, Denise?
Yeah, I agree with Shannon. And a huge thank you to her and Richard for putting this together. It was really quite eye-opening, reading the details of it. And it's unfortunate that we have to do this, but I, at this point, I don't see any other alternative. I mean, we've had relatives who will not stay in Ocean Shores. They will only stay outside because of their personal experiences in hotels. And the questions that I had were actually the same that Allison had, and that was in terms of enforcement.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Lisa Gribble.
So, Richard, are you recommending an ad hoc committee? And then if so, who would you see, like, what would the components of, like, the ad hoc committee be?
Well, the first step is, do we, as a council, say that we want to pursue this ordinance? And so Frank, is it all right if I ask for a thumbs up, yes or no, on proceeding?
Oh, I can ask for it.
Okay.
How about a thumbs up? We pursue this? All right, we got that.
So then, as far as the ad hoc committee, I was disappointed that Lisa, Scott was not here. She generally forms the ad hoc committees. I know I would like to be on it. And so Frank, I don't know, the next step is maybe volunteers, or how do we get?
I think Lisa had a conflict that she couldn't get out of tonight. So let's let her form the ad hoc committee. That's kinda her responsibility, and obviously, you should be on there because you've done all the work here, so.
And I'm happy with that. And my only caveat to Lisa is maybe do, I don't know, a phone survey to see who else has the wherewithal to be on the committee. And let's get that moving forward sooner rather than later, even if that's before the next council meeting.
Yeah, I'll call her in the morning. Yes, Rich.
Out of respect to our two new county commissioners, I feel that there's an opportunity now to call them. And I know the previous county commissioner in charge of the Health Department didn't even know that he was in charge of the Health Department. So that's not very helpful. The new ones might be more, they might work with us. And maybe that's a way of helping too. Because they, I know they have a new person, but with a voice from administration, we might make some progress.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, well, we'll entertain that and move on. We don't have a mayor pro tem here today to discuss city chats, so I guess I'd rather wait on that if the council's okay with that, and we'll bring that up at the next meeting. All right, thank you. So we don't have an executive session. Agenda review is going to be Thursday, this Thursday, at the thirtieth, at nine AM. And we have council member Scott, Taylor, and Wills on that. So last up is good of the order. And Denise, would you like to lead us off?
Sure. First, I would like to say congratulations to Sarah Logan for getting the official title, for doing much of what she has been doing. And again, thank you for helping you and Shontay with the budget. Also wanna say thank you to our OSPD for their fast response on the burglary. And it also shows us how important it is for us as citizens and neighbors to be aware of what's going on around us, and if we do have any question, to call the police and let them take it from there. And I also want to reiterate what Lisa said about Oihut, and what a wonderful addition to our community it is. Not just the housing, the wonderful places to stay, but also the businesses that are in Oihut. I know I certainly go to the restaurant quite a bit. So thank you, Pat, and thanks for all of your staff who maintain Oihut.
All right, thanks. Tom?
I wanna thank you guys for being here. Sometimes it's boring, sometimes it's great. And, but you guys are why we're doing this, so thank you for showing up. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks, Lisa Gribble.
I'd just like to take a minute to just thank the community and our city staff for the kindness they extended to our family during a pretty hard time, so thanks.
All right, Allison.
Richard and Shannon, thank you for all the work you put into that document. I hope to see a lot of great things come out of it. I really would like to thank the ad hoc committee we had for council ethics and guidelines, Rick, Jane, Denise, Joe, Sarah, Lisa, Scott. We've put a lot of hard work into it, and I appreciate all the time and effort that y'all have put into those documents. And we finished up with ethics, and hopefully we'll have the guidelines at the next meeting. So thank you.
All right, Rich.
It's always great to have a good public-private partnership. We've been a little aggressive on some of the hotels, but I wanna recognize the other hotels that do an outstanding job. And there are a few of them. But the city has, and the county, has done so much to help the hotels that I don't feel bad putting a little pressure on the ones that aren't holding up their standards, because we've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars on this facility to help fill their hotel rooms. And for the twenty-plus years I've been around, I've never seen this facility work better than it is now. And more communication to the business owners on who's here, how long they're here, where they're staying possibly, whether they're eating each of their meals here, so that the restaurants and hotels can know what's going on. And so for us to not put a little pressure on our partners to support this building and these people that we have put here for them, it's, I'm not uncomfortable with it. I'm sad, but we've had a great private-public partnership, and some of the private partners aren't holding up their end of the bargain. And it's time that they help. Thank you.
All right, Richard.
Thank you. So just pondering, when the city administrator read his report, I flashed in my mind, was that a high-speed squad car versus skateboard chase? So, you have the video, okay. I really wanna thank Sarah in the Finance Department, and congratulate Sarah on, I think this is a promotion. And it is clear to me, I've always felt that the Finance Department was always doing a good job, but it's my perception that the Finance, the Finance Department is doing the best job I've seen in the nine years I've lived here. So, thanks, Sarah, thanks, Shontay, thank the rest of the Finance staff. And I also wanna congratulate Nicole, because you're stepping up. And I, what I see when you attend the various meetings and stuff, I think it's a good choice, so thank you. I'm just wowed, I keep saying this over and over again, I'm just wowed at how competent our city staff is, and how fortunate we are to have the dedicated staff members doing the superb job that they're doing. And lastly, like others have said, thank you, Pat Brunstedt. It's a stellar development that you've got down there, and you have contributed immensely to the attractiveness of our community. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Are we ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we're adjourned.